Thank you, Seth. Oh, Bob will probably be late because.
Bob will be exactly on time.
Well, I'm actually.
Oh, wow.
Exactly on time.
You had your other meeting very quickly.
And we're back here in shoots as we.
How are we doing?
It's like, uh, I would put it in action.
Oh, yeah.
Advisory.
People don't fight the hand that they're having. We'll get, we'll get heat, uh. God bless you. All those days. Um, all right, with that, we will call to order. The Thursday, January sixteen, twenty twenty five, Citron zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Citron zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is a disagreement about the participation of our community. I want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members also participate, commit to these standards, support and support our community. The Citron CBA needs in person and via Zoom. All meetings are recorded, can be viewed on Citron Community, religions, and face of. Citron, we need television, face of a client. Recorded meetings are available following the date on our contact online and YouTube. With that, we will call the first application of Widmire M. Charles of one seventy five Maple Street, Citron Castle, requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with MGL forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, statute bylaws, and or any other relief with the Board of Appeals being granted to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling located at one seventy five Maple Street, Citron Castle. Do we have someone here on that? Okay.
He is here. He doesn't understand. I mean, I don't need him now.
Mr. Charles, yes, there he is.
Is he there?
Uh, we're doing Maple first. That's on you, David. Mr. Charles, welcome. How are you, sir? You are muted, or you haven't let him into the room. It's kind of great.
I have, I'm asking him unmute.
Hi, can you?
Hi, Eric.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Good evening, Widmire Charles. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Good. Nice to, nice to meet you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Could you run us through the project, please?
Sure. So, uh, the existing home is about an eight hundred ninety-six square foot home that I'm looking to tear down and, um, and build a three-bedroom, three-bedroom home. I know that there's a, an approved three-bedroom septic that I'm planning to install. The plans have been submitted in terms of, uh, the architectural plans that I'm looking to, um, to build. It's about, I think, four thousand square feet. Uh, you can see the plot plan there where we're planning to put the new home and the new proposed driveway. So that's essentially the nature of, of what I'm looking to do. When I, when I bought the place, it came with the approved three-bedroom septic and, um, and so I had plans designed for a three-bedroom home to put there along with that, um, that new septic system.
Um, great. So we see the plot plan, uh, the more insuring. And we see the zoning chart we've got proposed. And we're, we were having a little trouble. Uh, kind of reconciled the two and the diagrams. The existing, so as far as, so this is our long zoning, my understanding, and we'll, from the bottom side. Uh, and if that's the case, right, it'd be significantly undersized wide. But the tet path, it's not being stated, right, as front thirty feet, side fifteen, rear thirty feet. Um, it looks like, right, this is a fourteen hundred and forty, uh, point, fourteen thousand point forty-two square foot wide. Um, what are the current setbacks of the current structure? And what are the proposed setbacks for the proposed structure? Because those two things are not the same. Um, but the zoning chart said they are. Uh, I'm not sure what the, uh, what they are on the plot plan. So.
So. So sure, the, um, as far, as far as the existing, uh, I believe that it's, it's, I believe that it's in compliance, but what I do know is that when, uh, my architect put these plans together, the, um, the setbacks are within the, um, required setbacks. The only issue is that it's, like you said, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's just, but, but the, uh, the proposed new structure will all fit within the required setbacks.
Yeah, I, we, we, we think that that is correct. We're not disputing that, but when we approve a plan, we approve a plan with the measurements uh, and, and the zoning chart, right? So we need to know where the property is going to be sited and what is the proposal. Um, and some of the measurements here are interesting. You know, I, we really need to understand where the left side, the old left side was, where the new left side was, new right side, new rear, um, and, and new front setbacks, right, and where the old was. So that's, that's what we're kind of struggling with. Why don't we pause a second, Bob?
What's really, um, important, of course, is that the new construction needs setback in part.
Understood, right?
Which, which it does.
Which it appears to.
Um, I mean, according to the dimensions that I'm reading on, on the plan itself as opposed to the chart.
Right. Well, we have a dimension to a red line. What is the red, the red line? So the seventeen point three foot setback.
Yes, that's, that, that goes to, that goes to the corner of the, uh, new, the new foundation of, um, the new build. So that is within the, that's within the new, that's within the limit.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying? Yeah, that's a mystery, that's a mystery point. It's not the house.
What's the heavy black line?
Yeah, right, right.
You would think the heavy black line doesn't make the outline.
Right, it's, and again, from the right, we're looking at Maple Street being the front, which I think is correct. Right, and I assume the heavy black line is the outline of the new house.
That's correct.
Right, but then we have the new house, a proposed garage. So, which is really the house for our purposes, because the heavy black line goes out. So are we, are we mainly off the thirty feet to the new structure? Because I see a heavy black line and I'm coming hurt about. Um, so this is dimension, Chris, you see what I'm talking about with this dimension, right?
Uh, that's sort of, that's a water line.
No, no, this black, the black line, which supposedly the outline of the house is coming out this far.
Right.
So, so this is one point. What's the distance to here, right, to the, to Maple Street? I can't tell if that's less or greater.
Yeah, I can't tell if it's parallel and I'm just.
Right, because this is not, right?
So, Mr. Widmire, is, um, is the part of the house parallel with the front lot line?
So, I guess I, just so I understand your question correctly, um, the front, so are you?
So, you have a measure, you have a, you have a front setback measurement going to the corner of the garage of thirty feet.
Yes.
If I go to the other, other corner of the garage where the water line is shown.
Yes.
What is that measurement there?
That would, that would, I believe that would also be thirty feet.
Well, so that's, oh, we, we need to know that, right?
You need, you need what?
We need to know that.
Okay.
If that, it needs to be on the plan, because that's the other part of the house. And those two lines don't look a hundred percent parallel, which I don't know if it's closer or further away. It could be that the thirty-foot point is the nearest one.
Bob, can you see that architecturally any better than we can?
Yeah, I think, do you have the plans?
Yeah, yeah, we have.
Yeah, open the, uh, foundation from A one. I'll get the foundation trying to hold on tight to the plot. But it, it absolutely is no beneficial to the case. So look at, look at the left-hand side. And first floor, first floor, I'm sorry, not on the.
A one, first floor, yeah.
So we're out, see on the right-hand side of that plan. And then there's a little covered landing.
Yep.
Which.
Yeah.
And then dining office. Um, it looks to me as though that's up there actively citing fire, except for the dark line that projects out towards Maple Street.
Right.
Which is kind of.
What is that?
Oh, it looks like.
Front corner, but I see it's the edge, it's the edge of the block.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Right. So, okay, so although, again, they didn't. Yeah, they.
So that red line, that red line should be a lot.
Black line, okay. I, 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 that's how I, I would read it.
And then on the other.
That, all right, it's the same thing.
Well, we have set an open landing on the back of the dino, and maybe a deck, basically. So that wouldn't actually be part of the house.
Uh, so it brings, it would bring his setback, his left-side setback, that going on literally. A little tighter, I can't.
You know, necessarily, it's kind of all.
What are we, what, what we don't know, yeah.
But you don't know that, it actually, if I'm going to look at this, this with my eyes, it actually probably, it fades away from the strike.
It may, but, but that's, that's this represent, right, without a measurement.
Right.
I don't know what it is. Right, and then on the left-hand side, right, there's a seventeen point three to a red point, right, which does not appear to be the outline of the house.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can we, the board, mark up the missing points that we want to see? Mr. Widmire?
I'm here, yes.
Would you be able to come into the building department and, uh, we'll mark up a set of plans where we want measurements. You take those back to your architect and have him draw, have the drawing redone with the measurements we need?
Yeah, I, I'll do what, I'll do whatever you need me to do. Uh, it would, it would probably, it would go to, um, my surveyor. I don't think the architect necessarily.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, surveyor.
Where we get the plot plan, so.
Right, yeah, I'd go back to him and I'll, I'll have him do the measurements, uh, that you're looking for.
That would be excellent. So we'll mark up a plan, leave it with, uh, Elizabeth in the building department. Um, and you can take that, bring it to your surveyor and have that redone. Would you like to request a continuance?
Yeah, that was very good. We, we would suggest that, because then we can look at the revised plans um, and arguably a revised, uh, zoning chart that tells what the existing, uh, what the existing and the proposed is accurately, or the setups go. Um, and then we can look at it. We, we're not disputing that, as proposed, that this is, in all likelihood, uh, meets all the required setbacks. We just need all the accurate measurements.
Understand, and, um, when, when do you think you'll have, um, that ready for me to pick up? And when would be the, the, uh, soonest I can come back with the information you're looking for?
We, we can have a plan done tonight.
Okay.
Is there room in the next meeting?
Plenty of room from February twentieth.
Okay.
The only problem with that, well, no, no, it's continued, it's refined, February twentieth.
They have to advertise.
We don't have to advertise. So, so if you would like to request a continuance to the February coming of meeting, right, as long as we have a revised plan in front of us for that meeting, we can make a decision.
Okay.
All right, so I, I, so I would take that as a request for conveniency?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, um, I move that we continue the application. On favor?
I have it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That. Uh, I know, we didn't, and it's sort of my fault, uh, we didn't ask for public commentary. We are continuing it. We do have people here for one seventy-five Maple. Uh, we are continuing it, but I'm happy to hear, uh, if there's any kind of in, in the room on, online that would like to speak on one seventy-five Maple, I'm happy to hear it for the record.
I just want to know what square footage of the house was given.
Uh, name and address for the record, please.
With the rather one seventy-nine Maple.
Um, that is a very good question, um.
Four thousand three seven.
So according to the zoning chart, uh, approximately four thousand square feet.
From eight hundred to four thousand?
Well, you.
He's going up, yeah.
Name and address for the record.
Bruce Arvane, twenty-three Ganache Lane, Chair of Water Resources Commission. This particular property is in the Water Resource Protection District. Um, I believe the left side of it actually squeezes into the zone two, um, but the rest of it is inside the district. And, um, per the Water Resource Protection District by law.
Yep.
Imperius over, in this case, twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, requires a system for artificial recharge or facilitation. So I don't know what the imperius is, including the driveway.
So that should be on the plan at some point. Wouldn't necessarily affect your decision, but.
It, it, it affects whether you can issue the permit.
Well, and also planning is going to be a charge, stormwater in that case.
We can have that note, we can, we can mark up a set. Yep. We'll add that note, thank you, thank you for that, we'll, we'll put a note in so that they start considering that at this, at this point in time, so they doesn't have to waste. Right, okay? So thank you for that. Uh, anybody else on that application? With that, uh, we will move to the next application. Uh, the application of Robert Igorio here, twenty-second Concord Street, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, section six, section eight, ten, one, two, three, statute bylaws, and or any other relief with the Board of Appeals being granted to allow the extension, second floor living area above the prep ground, not access of the first floor footprint. Um, folks that are here on that application. Do we have anybody here on that application?
Nicholas, we're at Dawson.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
I can. Uh, name and address, and I believe we also have someone in the room on that application. So, sir, on, uh, online, uh, name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Nicholas Ling. I am, um, from Grady Consulting out of Kingston, and, uh, I am here to represent the owners of twenty-four Concord Street, present their, um, project to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and we have, do we have someone also over there who might be speaking on it?
Julie Johnson has some home design.
Ms. Johnson, you guys are not here at time, uh, the mics might be up, but it's just me here. Uh, and because we don't have a mic, please feel free to speak. Um, we have a handbrake. Ralph and Joyce. Wouldn't miss that? I didn't see it really.
That's, well, it regulars it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll turn to the, the folks for that. Um, all right, so, um, sir, please run us through the project.
Sure, uh, it actually looks like, um, Ralph and Joyce there have been able to unmute if you wanted to address their question before moving on.
Hi, this is, uh, Ralph Diocetus and Joyce Diocetus.
Hello, folks, how are you?
Good, thank you. Um, we, uh, own the property at Eight Dodge Road, which is directly behind the Concord Street property.
Yeah, look, uh, we're, we're, we'll, we will turn to you once, um, the applicant has run us through the project and we understand. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay. Um, all right, so.
All right, uh, again, my name is Nicholas Ling with Grady Consulting here. Um, so what we have going on at twenty-seven Concord Street here is they have, uh, an existing living space above their, um, garage. And what they're proposing to do is basically just expand that living space up on the second floor to fill out what is, uh, to match the existing footprint of the structure. So they're not expanding the structure outwards in any direction, and they're not expanding it, uh, upwards per se. Um, but they are just kind of filling out that second floor area. Um, it is, uh, about twenty-four by thirty feet, um, as is, and it is a little bit close to the rear lot line uh, for, um, according to the current regulations, but it, uh, is not expanding any. Um, and it is just under the twenty percent, I believe it's twenty percent, twenty percent threshold for, um, allowances as far as increasing, uh, gross square footage of the structure.
So I do, I, I do have a question on that. So your gross floor area calculation includes both the garage space, uh, and the living space of the garage, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, so if you did the calculation on just the living space, so like in use, in the zoning chart, you have square footage, which is seven hundred and eighty-three square feet, which is the footprint of the existing garage, is that correct?
Uh, that sounds correct, yes.
Correct, all right. So, um, so the, the living space above the garage is currently timed for it?
Um, I would have to get that exact number for you. If you can give me a moment, I can.
I, I, I'm happy to give you a moment. So, that's the minute. Well, that's what kind of. Yeah. That, that's the whole.
So right now, there's, uh, I have about five hundred and thirty.
Okay. And you're, and you're going to expand it to seven hundred, right?
That is correct.
Right, so that's.
I did not account for, uh, Julie, are there, are there like knee walls on the sides of this? I don't remember if I, I don't think I counted for that if there was.
No.
Okay. So then, then yes, that is, uh, we're going from about five thirty up to, uh, seven eighty.
That's, uh, whatever increase that is. Is, uh, now, so, uh, so we're a hundred and fifty square feet on five. So up the, up the living. Upward, this way. Well, I won't be around like a cent's life. Yes. So it's about thirty-two percent increase in the living space, right?
For the second floor.
Yeah, for the second floor, right, okay. The, whereas we're bumping it out and then kind of the rolls out, the bump out is going to be on what side?
There's, I'm sorry, the bump out?
Yeah, so you're, you're, I understand that it, it is not, uh, you're expanding the second floor. The second floor only extended partially over the first floor.
Correct, yes.
So you're expanding it so that it, so it extends more or less over the entire first floor.
To the left.
Yes, to the, well, to the left. How is that sited on this?
To the rear.
And to the, to the side, to the left side on, I'm not even.
So I just, yeah, left, so this way, so, so if I'm parallel to Concord Street.
Yes.
Okay, where the oil tank, where it says oil tank, it's going to be over that. Yes, okay. So we're not going to.
We're not going in close.
Into, into a, just not conforming, that side of it is along the non-conforming, uh, line. Okay, so, uh, the wall is something, not going further. Okay, I think I understand that. Um, I have other questions. Which is, on that second floor, there's, for entirety purpose. Uh, oh, on that second floor, yeah. No, just. Okay, um, on the second floor, there is currently a full bath, half bath.
Full.
Full bath. Right, um, are we adding any, and what else? Any other planning?
I think there's another sink up there. You were, propose and probably have a sink up there, but you might be informed. So open, so open living space now that has stolen ceiling.
For sure.
I think some full bedroom for.
So if we have, all right, so we have, so I'm looking at A two, right, which is probably the best, uh, understanding of what's going on, right? Uh, we have, uh, you know, renovate the existing bath. There is a sink in the corner that we're going to expand on. Uh, with, uh, some cabinets. Uh, all right, and then some beds, tables, chairs, sofas, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
It's an open space, is it?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, we're close here. Um, okay, that's, that's your proposal. Um, any ventilation other than in the bathroom? So, look, I'm trying to get to, is, are, are, is this someone trying to get in it to create an accessory dwelling? I'll be very transparent, accessory dwelling, without calling it an accessory dwelling, right? Um, there is already a bath, it's an open space, you're expanding the open space, right? There's a sink in the open space, right? We are not putting any ventilation in, right? We are not putting a kitchen in here, are we?
No.
Uh, so let me ask Bob, Bob, thoughts, opinions on this property in alternative to it?
Yeah, there's nothing here to indicate that it would be a self-contained, whether the function involved with it. To that, you do need a kitchen. I don't see any sign of that, um, beyond a kitchen. You know, we, we travel this back and forth a long time. What you really need is a stove.
Right.
In specific state language is permanent, so it's understood.
I'm playing the stove highlight. I understand.
And I don't see anything like that here. I'm not, I'm not concerned.
Okay. Um, or? Comments, thoughts? And then I'll turn it over to the public comment.
Going back, I do just want to have another idea.
Regardless, I, I, it's fine, I, I'm happy to keep all of it.
Um, going back to the zoning chart.
Yes.
We have existing height of the, on the zoning chart that says twenty-seven five. I have a height on the drawing of the new building of twenty-four seven. And a dog, uh, can we get clarification on existing heights?
And new heights.
New heights?
I'm sorry, where do you see the twenty-four seven?
On eight three, on your elevation sheet for new construction, the new plan elevation. I read twenty-four seven.
Oh, I see where that is, okay. Um, twenty-four seven there, and we have twenty-seven five. Okay, well, I'm going to go with the twenty-seven five. The twenty-four seven looks to be, um, it's about twenty-five feet, and that's off the garage slab. And no offense, Julie, but I don't think you climbed all the way up there and measured that. Um, but we did use our survey equipment to, uh, get an elevation on the ridge line of the structure. If you, um, uh, I'm not sharing my screen, so whoever that is, if you zoom into the, the south side front face of that garage structure, you will see there is actually a little bit of a small X. front face of that garage structure, you will see there is actually a little bit of a small X with a, um, says peak elevation is equal to twenty-seven point five, so that is, that is an elevation that we have actually located on the structure and measured.
Is that though, uh, from benchmark grade elevation? Or an actual measurement from, to, to, which from the surrounding grade, whatever it might be?
Yes, it's a big problem.
That would be, oh, that is, that is going to be according to NAVD eighty-eight, so that height is actually significantly less, I think, if I double check my math correctly here.
Right, yeah, I mean, so you've got to subtract the eight point one.
That's correct, um. So I actually have that as, uh, about nineteen point five, if that reads correct, but that can't be, hmm, no, I think that is.
Down, right, so, so that's correct, and your existing measurement is double eight, right?
I think that that is supposed to be a height and not an elevation, I think that is my error, because if you look at the deck in the back, it says the deck's elevation is nineteen and the second floor elevation is nineteen-one, um, so that that wouldn't compute as far as the math goes, as far as that being a, uh, an elevation, I think that is a mislabel on our part, and that should be a height.
So is the height then twenty-four seven from the flat? As the architect.
That's so probably.
No, I, I would think the height is twenty-seven point five, um, because I don't believe that a two-story building would only be twenty, nineteen and a half feet tall, that doesn't quite add up.
That's a tall, that's a tall garage too, so.
I mean, yeah, this is proportional, right, which I assume it is, right? It's not.
Yes, so I have that labeled as an elevation of twenty-seven point five, and that should be a height of twenty-seven point five.
On the drawing?
Correct, correct, on the, uh, on, on the plan, not, not, uh, not Julie's drawing, on, on my.
Right, on the plan, right.
Yes.
So, so where, so, if, so do we believe that the zoning chart to be accurate?
Yes, because I have twenty-seven point five as a height on the zoning charts, if we believe the zoning chart to be accurate.
And, and the overall height does not change, right?
Correct, with the proposed work, the overall height will not change, that is correct.
Wait a minute.
No.
Wait a minute. Well, that's why I keep a question.
There is an increase.
That's not true.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's an increase from old to new.
Yeah.
On four, four thirty-six inches.
Right.
I'm sorry, there is?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I understand. Showed on the dotted line of Julie, I are.
I do see that now, yes, that's correct. That is my mistake, that is my mistake, Julie is reflecting that it is supposed to go up four and a half feet.
So much like the last application, I think we're in a similar position. Which is, we'd like to, oh, if we're going to approve something, we'd like to approve something with accurate measurements. Right, so that we can say we're approving this plan with these measurements pursuant to, right, a zoning chart that is, that is accurate. Are you willing to tweak the plans? Fix the zoning chart, because we are going up. See that, and then, uh, put those in for consideration at our next meeting. I, I'd continue, you know, continue in here.
Uh, absolutely, but is that, is that not something we could simply condition under an approval tonight, rather than carrying this forwards another two weeks, because that's, it's not going to, we have the numbers and it doesn't push any boundaries as far as the bylaws are concerned?
So, well, again, that's what I was, what I was going to say, it's, it's a height.
Yeah.
It's within.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up to thirty-five.
It's, it's the last one to have to do a setback.
Not understood.
The height can be well within, uh, I think we can continue this discussion.
Right.
As long as we get a revised set of plans with better amounts on.
Right. Substantially these, right, the setback's not going to change.
Right, the setbacks, so you get that height knocked straightened out.
All right.
So, yeah, and then continue this discussion, I think we need to.
What question? You're here.
Close to here.
All right, uh, so thank you for that, Bob, any more comment on this, on you? I'll turn it back to the board and then public commentary.
No, I think Chris is right, you know, you can, uh, you can also, the representative with Brady seems to be, if you wished, you could a little favorably on this application tonight with the condition that the documentation be updated, certainly it's going to be updated prior having the file for a building, right? Uh, so that's, that's, that would be one observation, um, the others, I think there's public comment, but needs to be.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But yeah, that's, that's the one, you know, it's, it's certainly up to the board, but seems to be, could do that.
Okay, uh, or at this point, any additional statements, comments, questions?
Uh, so as far as the rest of this project goes, understanding that it is an existing two-story garage that sits just less than eight feet from the property, from the rear property. Uh, our zoning bylaw allows eight feet for detached one-story accessory building. Uh, right now, the existing rear elevation, to me, seems minimal, um, it doesn't seem, you know, huge, the new rear elevation looks massive. And the overall structure looks to be almost the same size as the existing house. I hesitate in approving this, being that it now looks like a second house that's eight feet away from the property. I think it's, it's pushing the, it's pushing it too far, I would go back to if if I did have a, a one-story garage, eight feet from a cropping line, right behind these guys, how could they also be by? Would I be allowed to put a second story on it? That's kind of, that's where I am on that, I, I don't like increasing this way, you know, and making it as massive as it looks from the back.
Other thoughts at this point to the board? Right, just one, not right now, okay, uh, public commentary in the room? Name and address for the record?
Steve York, age sixty-one, Main Street in Aurora.
Hey, Steve.
I think what you've got to do is determine exactly what the non-conforming nature of the structure is and then determine whether that is increasing or not increasing, if it doesn't increase, they're in touch with them.
Thank you for your legal conclusion, um, anybody online?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Ralph and Joyce Diocetus, um, we live at Eight Dodge Road, directly behind the Concord Street property in question.
Yes, folks.
Um, my question is, um, the rear deck. The deck, the rear of the building, as you note, is, uh, roughly eight feet from the property line. The posts, the deck, the second floor deck, come, it comes right out to the edge, right out to the property line. And the posts that hold up the deck are on the property line. I would like consideration to be given to, to shave off perhaps a foot on the deck so that the posts are not on the property line. I, I don't think that deck needs to be that wide for its purposes of going in and out of the door on the second floor. In addition, um, to the left of the garage, there is a very large tree, it's been there a long time, right on the property line. I would like some assurance that that tree will not be cut down. In fact, I would like some assurance that during the construction period the contractors will be careful not to go onto our property and disturb all the vegetation that's there. So I, I don't, I, I don't wish to stop the project, but I would like those considerations to be considered by the, um, by the family.
Right, I am, I'm looking at an overhead view of, uh, your property, so you're looking from your view, the left of the garage, from the back of it.
Yes, 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 yes.
And that's on your property?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's on the property, I mean, it looks like it.
It's on the line.
It's on, it, it looks like it's on both properties.
The tree is probably fifty-fifty on the line.
And, and then, the deck, so, this is a this is a question to the applicants, the, the deck that is described, as it currently exists, will that change? Does the plan to change it as part of this construction, or will it? So, so your, your debt that overhangs or, or above the property. Um, and then we also have, which is not in the area of the expansion, right? Expansions.
No, it is. So that deck, yeah.
Right, so that's this deck, right, that's what he's talking about. You're not changing that outdoor deck, no?
It may just get repaired, it's, it's all just everything else, so, but it would be in the same footprint, or if the owner is through a renewable, it is.
Right, so the expansion is this, right, and, oh, off and out, that's, right, that's the existing, it's existing where the door is, right?
Exactly.
Not moving the door, right, but again, to sort of your point, you're expanding all this, and there's a debt that I can, I'm not going to say it is or it isn't, but it sounds like it's in the debt, that further protrudes closer to that same property line that you're concerned about, I'm just trying to clarify this for, for everybody in the room. So again, that's, it's, it's a, I think, valid, valid point, um. Any other public comment, so thank you folks for that, very much appreciated, that, that comment is very helpful, uh, anybody else?
No hands.
No hands. All right, um.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna point on the deck, the deck isn't changed, the footprint of the deck is not changing, but there's.
No, because the expansion, so if you look at the plan, right, the elevations, where the extra is all this, right? This is the existing, so the deck would be exactly where the door is and that, where that window might be.
So it's not, it's not moving, it.
No, but, but it's the same. Anything, it's getting freshed up, it's freshed up, but it's still, you know, so the, uh, the butters are saying, look, that, that's coming out, to my practice, it's only seven and a half.
But that's the current state of affairs, right?
Correct.
It's currently on or near the.
That's right, even a little bit closer than this construction.
Yeah, yes, but that's the current state of affairs, that will be the, that will be the future state of affairs. And so taking it in a foot would in fact be changing the footprint of the existing structure, well, of, of the deck, of the, excuse me, of the deck, of the deck.
It would change the deck, it doesn't change.
It's a, it's a, it's a modification.
I would ask Bob, his take on this too, but if there are the existing footings that are under that dark, we don't want to change those, we want to reuse those footings, so if there's a way that we can.
If you change the deck and needed new footings because of that change, you have to know the door conservation issue because the project's.
Right.
So, certainly if it were my project, I would be over or the, that, I would resist changing.
Right, I, you know, a, a general, yeah, no, it's, it's a very good, it's a very good point, um, you know, if it goes to sort of the other aspects of this project, right? Um, the, the, the question then being, and I don't know the answer, is obviously they're close to the property line, are they on or over the property line? Because that's a whole, that's a whole different set of actual issues.
I don't have locations on the footings themselves, but I, um, our survey reflects the deck is, uh, four inches onto the owner's property, it does not cross the line, the deck itself, uh, but I do not have locations on the footings.
It, so it's, so the deck, I'm sorry, the deck is four inches prior to the, uh, the butters.
Right, within the.
Within the.
Correct.
That those footings are even another eight inches or foot in from that, the way that we're running. So if the footings are where they are, minimize the opening.
Yeah.
The deck one is right there, we'll make every attempt to do that, so that it's at least an attempt made in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, I, I'm not going to pine on this, but, you know, where those footings are, you know, maybe the deck's four inches in, those footings are four inches over, there's a difference.
No, the footings are probably more likely or further.
I, I said, I don't know, I said, yeah, so I understand, I understand.
The other one to consider is the property dates from nineteen twenty-seven.
Yeah, by the twenties, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's a difference.
So we were talking earlier.
That's all part of the thing.
About the foundation, you said, I thought that, I thought that, any idea of work on this, including them? I mean, how to be in a basement of that.
No, if there is anything to be done, it can be done from the inside.
I didn't know, no, I didn't, you had talked about, you had talked about the foundation being substantial, and all the footings that they're.
I haven't, I think we have pictures of it.
All right, um, we have, uh, you're voting on it today, and here's our, our other colleagues out today, um, this is an interesting one. Because
I would see there's an intensification of it, so, like, non-conformity is the same. It's not, it's not moving.
It's not a new non-conform, right, so I think, I think we all agree, it's not, I, I think it's not.
Not, not a new, not.
Yeah, so, so, so the question is, is it an intensification? Uh, we have a, I don't think it is, I'm on the fence about it, uh, you think it is? Yeah, that's fair, and then the question is, and I think that's what you were trying to get to, your own analysis is, um, is, is that substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Uh, specifically because it is that close to the rear property, to that property line, um, and, uh, it is a uh, a significant, or what appears to be a significant change, right? Which is interesting, because the plans make it look like it's a very big, big change, and what we're, what we're seeing on the uh, you know, on the field card, and, and, but, uh, you know, we're going from five hundred and thirty to seven hundred square feet, so approximately thirty-two, thirty-three percent increase of square footage, which in the living space, you know, on that floor, not, not talking about the whole structure, I think is, for these purposes, the more relevant, um, the more relevant analysis, uh, so, you know, is thirty-two percent more on that second floor something that makes it look like a, you know, to your point, like a. Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah, 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 no, and I, and I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, not, it's, uh, um, but I think in this particular situation, I think I'm, I would I would, I would fall on, on the side of the fence on this, um, so, uh.
What was it for five?
Yeah, what was it for five, we were looking, yeah, so, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, then on the second application of Robert and Maria, who is in the Park Street situation, the aggressive special. Make the motion, uh, then on the second application of Robert and Maria O'Carroll, please, in the Park Street situation, the aggressive special firm finding, or question finding, in the corner of the section E ten point two C, in Street by law, and then you know, we leave, got. With my grant, they're allowing patches for a living area, but garage, not in excess of the first floor foot, footprint.
Which one, the, pursuance to the. They did, they did.
They agreed consulting, dated December twenty-two twenty-four, and at the board finding such, uh. Expansion does not create new non-conformities, except that intensified in the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantial or close to the, but I further make a motion that. That this approval is conditioned upon a recent middle, uh, would be correct, um, heights in, um. Of the, you know, proposed, uh, expansion of the garage.
Uh, I stuck in, all in favor?
I'm all opposed.
No. Man, uh, it's granted. Then, fair enough, Elizabeth, do we have any other business this evening?
Um.
Minutes.
Yeah, actually, can we approve the meeting minutes, um, she wants to do this, uh, from December, or May, December nineteenth, forty minutes?
So, I move that we approve December nineteenth, twenty minutes, so, all in favor?
I.
That, uh, I move that we finish the hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor?